We want to call to order our Tuesday, May 14th, special meeting of the South Yuga Lynn Hurst Board of Education. Our work session this evening. It is now 5:33 PM. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Shelby?
Here.
Our present, thank you. We can go right into the minutes. 2.1. The minutes of the regular meeting for April 23rd will be approved as recorded or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. May we get a motion to approve 2.1?
So move second.
Ms. Lee and Ms. Falkenberg?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Perfect. These minutes will be attached to the Treasures Friday update. Thanks, Josh. We can go right into item three, Dr. Reed. 3.1. The fabulous Sunview stars under the direction of Mrs. Erica Taylor.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I'm laughing because this is set up for the third graders and it's just a perfect height.
Perfect.
Just a perfect height for me. So, good evening, everybody. Tonight's visitors are from Sunview. And I'm going to introduce Mrs. Erica Taylor. And this is so exciting when our children can come here and show off their skills. So, Mrs. Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Erica Taylor, the proud principal of Sunview Elementary. We bring you greetings from the sunny side of town. I'm so excited to share this presentation and introduce Ms. Irwin to all of you and her fabulous students that came with her tonight. Before I bring them up, just in reflection of what they're going to present tonight, as I do walkthroughs in all the classrooms and observe, I had the pleasure of observing Ms. Irwin's class do some really phenomenal things. And when I think of students, and we've talked about as a leadership team, about the portrait of a graduate, well, I'm thinking of a portrait of a third grader. And by the end of third grade, I want to see certain things from my students, too. And one of the things that I'm noticing from the way that our students are educated and engaged in Mrs. Irwin's class is that independent thinking, which is so important for all students. And she is helping her students to develop that sense of independent thinking and being truly engaged in the work that they're doing. It's not just about a worksheet. It's not just about a regular lesson, which are, in time and place, almost have a time and place and space. But what I've noticed in observing these students is that they're able to not just comprehend, but they're able to discuss the text. They're able to give text evidence. They are actually truly having fun reading and being able to debate. So that was one of the special things that I saw the students doing this year is actually debating each other, listening to one another's comments and says, "No, I disagree with that." And this is why. And so hopefully tonight you'll see a little piece of that. Mrs. Irwin will share a little bit of how she brings that piece of engaging with the text through something called Socratic Seminar. So she'll show you a little bit about that. So at this time, I'd like to introduce to you one of my fabulous four third grade teachers, Mrs. Ms. Irwin.
We have nine of my students come tonight. And they have a third grade only skating party, roller skating party to get to. So we're very excited to be going. And we won't take up too much of your time. I'm going to steal this.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I forgot. Sorry.
They're going to come up front. At first, I'm just going to show you the presentation real quick. Just a little background knowledge. My class is the gifted cluster class. And this year, I happen to have a cluster of 12 gifted kids. Do you want to give me a book there?
No, no, you can.
Thank you. So, yeah, I have 12 students that are gifted, but that means not all my students are gifted. And through the use of complex texts, which I'm going to show you really quick, they have all grown amazingly. Their I-Ready scores were, on average, 174% growth. So, yeah, they're working really, really hard. Anna, they having fun?
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay.
That's our class after we finished our first novel. So what we do is we read novels. We start off with smaller books, but then we go right into novels. And we had three main novels this year. And that's after they finished the first one. So this is just to show you how important exposing them to complex texts is. That's just showing you great minds, you know? Regular practice with complex texts teaches students how to make sense of difficult language, complex ideas, and complicated structures. So here's, this is what Cameron said.
I love the what. I love the feeling when you get lost in a book. And which makes me feel less.
And these are all their own ideas. I didn't prompt any of these. This was Kelsey's favorite quote.
Then Bertha let out a big contented sigh and said, "I never in my wildest dreams would have thought we'd had a family like this." Would you guess? A family like this? Is that what she said? She had said that. A family, a real family. A family that cared about me and called me butter bean and was going to take the candy jars out of my room for the first thing tomorrow. A family that wasn't broken. A family that I've been wishing for all those times. I could hardly wait for Sunday when I could find my flower in the garden of blessings and write "my family" on it. Suddenly Bertha called out, "Star, first star, everybody make a wish." I looked up at that star twinkling over the mountains. But instead of wishing, I just closed my eyes and breathed in the piney air. My wish had finally come true.
I really like where you write "if you achieve," because it showcases just because you have a disability, doesn't mean you're less self-righteous, self-accomplished, or less smart.
Okay, well.
A model we lights up in my head of our last name written in neon lights in the window of Travis's new place. And there's another model with me being happy, reading and making art and finding my special Ally Shades place in the world. But these models won't go into my sketchbook of impossible things, because they were actually happening. I lean back against my Big Brother and feel his hands on my shoulder. Their voices seem to fade as I look up at that livestream in their windows. Things are going to be different. It's like birds can swim and a fish can fly, impossible to possible.
I like this passage because it shows how Ally persevered and kept going during the hard times.
Hello, my name is Matthew and I love this book Fish and Tree because there's so much expression and feeling in the story. The characters and events cloud it.
What I really like about Wild Robot is all of the vocabulary words and all of the really good pictures that have been put in to make this. And I really like that Roz actually now fits in with all the animals.
Roz is a robot. So we also do literature circles every week. And there's different jobs that they have. And then they're created on a rubric. If they're prepared for their job, how well they engage in the discussion, how well they listen to others and feed off of others' conversation.
I really like when we do literature circles because we get to understand how others feel. And we get to get a deeper understanding of the book.
A deeper understanding.
I really like when the director gives his or her question and it allows others to share their feelings about the book.
I like our literature circles because I like that we can see others' perspectives on the book and you might write something in it.
Welcome to Fish and Tree, which is open for six. Well, I'll be asking questions and you'll have to answer them. And I will be calling up people's jobs to answer. Okay, first I will be asking one question. Question one, do you think Mr. Daniels will be named soon?
Mason.
Um, I kind of think yes, but I kind of think maybe if he's not going to be named to Ally, so he's probably only going to be named to Jay and Jessica because they've been bullying Ally and Mr. Daniels has probably been pretending like he hasn't been seeing it. So he's been seeing every single bit of the bully.
Okay. I really like how you like included these two names. And it was like really good. You said, "He will not be named to this person because this means that." Which I really like how you did that.
That was nice. That was really good.
Yeah. Does anybody else want to talk about it? Does anybody else have? That's how you said, like Ally, then Kisha. Like I really liked how you included that story and everything.
That's really nice.
It was really good.
We're going to stop there so you can see an actual Socratic seminar now happen. And again, like Mrs. Taylor said, they like to debate. None of this was prepared ahead of time. All I asked them was the question. So I'm going to put the question on the screen and then they're going to go up front. So go in front of the table, guys. Take your papers. Okay, yeah. Can I have you in the room?
Yes. I would love to introduce each one of them as they go up. We have Ms. Audrey Barter, Olivia Taylor, Sala Hatchett, Emmy Feeson, Ava Smith, Savannah Dancy, Tristan Jarrett, Matthew Goldberg, and Kelsey Reed. Give them a round of applause.
All right. So the question is, it's been said that the definition of a real family is a mom, a dad, and a child. Do you agree? Use text evidence from any of our three novels to defend your answer. All right, so who wants to go first?
I disagree because that doesn't mean, because just because you're related, it doesn't mean you're like a family. Like you can be related to someone and live under the same roof as someone, but you might not like them and you don't have to be a family. And, um, and, um, and basically, um, and also it shows that in Wild Robot, when Roz, the robot, tried, almost dies because Brightbill was being attacked by a crazy fish. And he was trying, she was trying to save him. They're not related, but Roz found him and tried to help him. And that doesn't make them a family. And that makes them a family, but it doesn't mean like you can be related to someone that hate them.
I agree with Ava because you don't have to be all blood related to be a family. Because, for example, Roz is a robot, but Brightbill is a real, like, animal. She was made to go into other people's homes and help them. But Brightbill, which is a goose, he was made to live his life out in the wild. But they are still family to each other. Roz takes care of him and Brightbill loves it, too.
Aww.
I disagree because like, what if you're, what if you're a family, but you're not related? Then you might like, you might not like the same things and it will be kind of hard to get along.
I disagree with Olivia because you don't have to have the same blood and you don't have to not like them. You can just not like them and still be a family. Just like you don't even have to be blood related. You just have to live under the same house and get a doctor or something. In The Wild Robot, Brightbill asks a lot of questions for Roz. Like, "Were you smaller back then?" Then Roz answered, "No, I was not. I was always this size, but I was smaller back then." I mean shinier back then.
Shinier.
That was page 225.
May I have your hand?
I, um, I agree with the majority of the people because Roz, a family does not have to be blood related. A family just needs to like, um, care and they like put feeling and they help each other and they go through different situations together. Like when Roz saves Brightbill, a fox wanted to eat the egg from the dad did crash, but only one egg was alive and Roz wanted to save Brightbill, so.
Do we have any evidence from any other books?
I agree because you don't need to be blood related or know each other by heart. You just need to have the characteristics of a family like love, kindness, and respect for each other. Test evidence is. The love of the story with the page 126 is that even though Brightbill finds out that Brightbill isn't his real mom, he says, "I think I'll keep calling you mom." And Roz says, "I think I'll keep calling you son." And I think that's showing test evidence. Because even though that they're not blood related, they still care for each other and love each other no matter what.
I agree with Tristan because all you need to be a family is the characteristics of a family.
Okay.
Being kind and respectful to each other, protective and encouraging. And Wild Robot, Roz was cheering on Brightbill on his first day or time of swimming.
I agree with almost everybody because a family doesn't have to be blood related or like types of other things. They just have to have the characteristics. Like, for example, caring and wish Howard was being bullied by TJ, but Charlie pushed him to protect Howard even if he got in trouble. So if you're willing to make sacrifices for other people, then that just makes it a family.
I have something to say about what Olivia said. I understand why she would think that, but I don't understand like how, um, how like you wouldn't get along if you didn't like the same things because everyone has their own opinions and thoughts. And that's why I think families don't have to be blood related because you can be a family still and like not like each other. But you can be like not blood related and still not like the same things, but you can still value the other person's perspective.
Ms. Irwin, does she go? In the black shorts.
Oh, we didn't get Audrey for you. Audrey, sorry.
Audrey, you tried to sneak out of there on us. We caught you.
What was your text evidence and tell us your opinion?
Um, a family doesn't have to be blood related because there's someone who supports you and is kind to you. And for example, in the book Fish and Tree, Ally gets supported by her family to learn to read because she has dyslexia and she can't read. But she, her family still supports her.
As you can see, they could go on for a long time. I don't have to do a lot of teaching. Thank you very much.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
I want to thank our Sunview families for coming out and taking the time to bring your students today. I hope that all of you got a little piece and parcel of the great learning. And this is, that's student engagement. The students are using the complex texts and their experiences of each other and building this culture and community of learning. So I think that's a beautiful thing. I appreciate your time and listening. And I want to thank Ms. Irwin again because it was part of her, um, her vision to expose the students to really, not just complex texts, but really she takes time to read all these books, take notes on it, plan lessons, and again, let the students each year to kind of lead the way. We want our students to, to have that empowerment. And I think that she has captured that this evening. So thank you all. Thank you, third graders.
So at this time, I do have one comment for the kids because of listening for your debate. You talk about what is a family? I have a family that I live with, but as I look around the room, you made me think of something else. And this has been my SEL family because we share the love. We share the caring for each other. And if you can learn to love people that you're not related to. So thank you for teaching us something. And the good news is the five-year forecast is next and you don't have to listen to it. So if you want to take a few minutes, thank you very much for bringing everybody out and we'll be enjoying your skating party.
Have fun skating.
And we're going to get into the next segment.
Have fun. She said, "Are you going to the skating party?" I said, "Yes." Where is the skating party? Maybe I want to go.
You have a say.
Oh, I'm not going.
Is it US style?
We have a say. Oh, I do like, they have a good Sunday night skate.
No offense.
Mr. Hill, we can go.
Do we do anything? They're so expressive.
Their words, like they use big words. I know adults that can't use words like that.
Now, I mean, those kids are going to be so ready.
They're going to be so far ahead.
Absolutely. The fact that they can listen.
It's almost like they're going to be ready to write dissertations almost in high school if they're doing that right now. Like they're not going to be intimidated by college essays. They're not going to be intimidated.
Honestly, thank you to Ms. Irwin for that. I mean, it's amazing when you go into a classroom. That's amazing.
Who's making noise? You need to press mute?
He don't know how to work a spreadsheet.
What's a spreadsheet?
A spreadsheet is the question.
What is a spreadsheet? No, as you know, the May update, it's literally just going through and making the updates to the actuals for the year and any kind of new developments that have come through since the November forecast. So I will work through this fairly fast, but stop me if you guys have questions at any point. So start with 1.01, the general property tax line. There is, the total actual received for the year with the settlement that came in was $50,484,103. So, and there is no increase for the life of the forecast for the reappraisal that will be happening this summer. So that, there is, we should see some sizable growth in that. I don't feel comfortable putting it until we actually see it and realize it. So, and then no increases assumed from fiscal year '25 to '28. For item 1.035, the unrestricted grants and aid, the estimate for fiscal year '24 is $5,573,995. And a decrease of $100,000 is factored in for fiscal year '25 and then flatlined beyond to '28.
Say it again. Because I'm not reaching. Okay, I read it.
At the bottom.
I read it wrong. Because I kept saying, and I was going to ask you, but it says 29. I'm sorry, nothing. I read it wrong.
Okay. 1.04, restricted grants and aid. The estimated funding total for this is $1,295,143 with no increase assumed for '25 through '28. This is going to be our career tech funded, economically disadvantaged funded, English learners gifted, all the restricted pieces of the foundation payments we receive. Item 1.05 is your state share of local property taxes. The district is estimated to receive $5,714,005 in fiscal year '24 with no increase assumed for '25 through '28. And the final revenue line is 1.06, all other revenue. There is, the increase in this that we are seeing is due to better interest earnings assumed. And my estimate for '24 is $3,782,184. And there is a steady decrease in this from '25 to '28 due to the interest earnings decreasing based on the size of our funds lowering throughout the life of the forecast. Moving on to the expenditure side, 3.01 is personal services. The one thing I'd want to point out for this, I know we, we did TA a new Celta agreement that is not included in this. This is not assuming any, any increases. No COLA increases in this at all beyond current contract year. So, and the personal service estimate for fiscal year '24 is $37,093,126. And then it's that 2% assumed for the balance beyond, so '25 through '28. 3.02, employee retirement insurance benefits. This one, you'll see, this is where we saw some, some movement from the November forecast because we got the leaving the consortium and being able to predict better the next couple of years. Definitely helped this line item because I, I was factoring a sizable percentage in before for the unknown because it was kind of all over the place with suburban. So that, with the estimate for fiscal year '24 being $15,574,800, and for fiscal years '24, '25 through '28, there's projected individual increases for an average of about 9% overall each year. Then 3.03, 3.04, 3.05. This is your purchase services, supply and materials, and capital outlay. The estimate for fiscal year '24 for purchase services is $7,946,583. The estimate for supply and materials is $2,206,935. And the estimate for capital outlay is $585,250. And those are all tied directly to our budgets that we established at the beginning of the year. The purchase service estimate for '25 is $8,623,963. And for '26, '27, and '28, no increase is assumed. No increase is assumed for supply and materials beyond '25. And that's $2,343,524. And capital outlay for '25 through '28, the, there is, it's flatlined, so no increase is assumed. So to finish it up, the outlook. Ending cash balance is expected to decline during fiscal years '25 through '28 from a $23 million balance at the end of fiscal year '25 to an estimated negative balance of $1.8 million at the end of fiscal year '28. The usual tagline, this is not unexpected. However, corrective actions will occur over the next couple of years in an effort to reduce anticipated expenses in order to delay as long as possible the need for additional tax revenue. Any questions?
Any questions? When I first became a board member and I thought this was actual fact, like this was hard and solid, and I used to get so nervous. And I was like, "That just doesn't make sense. Oh, my God, I'm going to have a levy every year." But then I was able to understand it, so fear not.
And this will be next meeting for approval.
For approval.
Yes.
Catherine said hers wouldn't open up. I don't know if you could send it a different way for hers.
Um, yeah, I can try and resend it.
Well, I have this.
Oh, you have it now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, if you guys got any questions, please reach out in the meantime and we'll get them answered for you.
When you tried to open it, what did it do?
It's, um, I don't know if it said not available. Said error at one point.
Okay.
And then I waited, went back.
And then I waited, went back, tried again, and it said not.
For the forecast or the assumptions or all of them?
For the forecast.
For the forecast itself? Okay.
Yeah.
Remember the security thing, though. If you're logged on in that other.
Not for that one.
That one won't do anything. That's just a basic Excel sheet.
Excel sheet, so she should have been able to open it.
Is your, is your Microsoft suite up to date? I just wonder if you tried to open it up and air it out if the Microsoft suite's not up to date.
Don't ask me difficult questions.
Yeah, I could try and re-save it as a PDF and send it to you. Maybe you can open it up easier.
A little bit easier across different.
I mean, I did update my login and everything.
Okay. Oh, you got it now.
She said suite.
She said suite.
If, if anybody has any questions before we get to that next board meeting, um, feel free to reach out to him before we publish them.
And if, personally, if you want to sit down at any time, I can walk through it a little more in depth for you if you want. Even prior to the November one. The November one is where we, I do a little bit more in depth and go in, or right now, we're just updating.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hill and Mr. Haines. Thank you. All right, hearing no further questions or comments. We do have a need for a brief executive session for the purposes of
A.
A. And we got a subsection, uh, two.
Two and seven.
Yeah.
All right, two and seven, agreed. So just to be, um, for those of you that are listening to us here in the lobby, in the lobby and on the website, the Board of Education may hold an executive session for purposes of the consideration of any of the following matters. We're going in executive session for A, to consider one or more employment and/or compensation. So we will not take any action
Yeah.
in there. And then we will come back out to session to close the meeting. It is, uh, 6:05. May we get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second. I'll take the second.
I'll take the so moved.
Karen and Ashley. And we don't need any directors.
Yeah.
We don't need Dr. Reed. We do need our two assistant seats and treasurer.
Oh, my goodness.
Right. All right.
We gotta do a.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all for joining us. We'll be back to conclude that meeting.